All right.
I would like to recognize our Chaplain of the Day, Assistant Pastor Amicia Alice Perry of Dominion Transformation Center Church invited by Councilwoman Cooper Sutton. Pastor Perry, would you please lead us in prayer?
Amen. Matthew the 12th chapter, the 20 verse first, 25th verse says, "And Jesus knew their hearts thoughts and said unto them, Every kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation, and every city or house divided against itself shall not stand." Let us pray. So Father, first of all, we tell you thank you. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for your mercy, God, and we thank you just for being good to us. God, we thank you, Lord God, that you've allowed us to see another day. God, we thank you that you've allowed us, Lord God, to remain and even assume our positions in the earth, Father. God, we praise you, we magnify you, and we lift you up, God. We thank you for being a God that sits high and look low. God, we thank you for being sovereign in all your ways, and your glory shall be revealed in this earth. God, so now we're asking you, Father, to look upon our city, Father, and even our gatekeepers, God. God, we ask you right now that you touch minds, hearts, Father, regulate minds and hearts. God, you touch their spirits, Father, that they do what you've called them to do. God, I ask you right now that you just have your way, Father, and anything that's not like you, Father, we ask you right now that you, God, cast it down and cast it out right now, Father, that your will shall be done, Father. I speak unity right now over our city. God, I thank you right now that we'll be unified, that how must we walk together unless we agree, Father? So God, we thank you, Lord God, for what you're getting ready to do. We thank you for what you've already done, Father, and God, we thank you for what you've already getting ready to do in the next couple of minutes, Father. God, we praise you, we magnify you, and we lift you up, Father. God, your glory shall be revealed, Father, and we just give you the glory. We bless your name, God, in all things, Father, you shall be revealed, God. Your glory shall be revealed in the earth, God, even in the city. God, we thank you for redeeming our city. God, we thank you for sending on the right path of righteousness, God, that your righteousness shall be revealed in the earth. So we praise you, we magnify you, we lift you up, God, and we give you all the glory, God. We believe that you will show your hand in a mighty way. God, we believe that you're not like man that should change your mind or God, or even go the other way concerning us. So God, we thank you and we believe and withstand on your word, God, that what you're about to do, you will do it, God, in your son Jesus' name, Father, because it is done, Father, and it is so. And these things we do ask and we say hallelujah and amen.
Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, you're recognized.
Thank you for that powerful and spiritual prayer, and I pray that it touches every heart and every mind. Thank you so much. The City of Memphis, Tennessee, by the City Council, greetings. Be it hereby known that Assistant Pastor Perry, in recognition of a life of exemplaryity, qualities, understanding service to the city, involvement in humanitarian affairs, and demonstrate concern of governmental process, has been appointed the Chaplain of the Day of the Memphis City Council and is hereby entitled to all of the honors, the rights, the privileges obtaining to the office and to display of this certificate, given under the seal this ninth day of September 25. Our Chairman Jay Ford Canali, presented by the Member of the Council, Yolanda Cooper Sutton. Thank you.
Madam Comptroller, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Council members Carlisle, Cooper Sutton, Easter Thomas, Ford, Green, Logan, Smiley, Spinoza, Swerengen, Washington, Walker, Warren, White, Chairman Canali.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. Pastor Perry, thank you for those words and for praying over us and with us today. We appreciate your presence. I believe the Vice Chair has read the meeting minutes for our August 19, 2025 meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes and find them to be in order. I move for the adoption of the August 19, 2025 meeting minutes as amended. I'm not able to do it electronically, but I so move. Okay, there it is.
All right. Meeting minutes removed by Vice Chair JSW, seconded by Carlisle, seeing no members in the queue. Madam Comptroller, please prepare the voting screen.
Carlisle, yes. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Spinoza, yes. Swerengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item number one.
Item number one is a resolution recognizing the achievements of kids in technology. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Logan.
Councilwoman Logan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Jackal and Thomas Smith and the Kids in Technology students to join me at the podium. Come on down. Let's give them a hand as they come down, y'all. We are so proud of the wonderful achievements of kids in technology and its mission to expand access to STEM education and innovative programming to students in our community. At this time, I'd like to present certificates to them all in the program, and we're going to read the, we're going to read the resolution here and after we give them there. Malakali. These are all certificates with your names on them. Congratulations. Jalen Givens, Joshua Givens, Skylar Harris, and Raylon Neal. Did we miss someone? Okay, great. And colleagues and City of Memphis residents, we'd just like to take the time to honor and recognize the talent in our city. We thank you so much for sowing into their lives, and we want to encourage you all to continue doing what you do, continuing to allow your talents and your gifts to be used for your city. And I'm going to read through the information about your organization and some of the wonderful things that you all are doing, but I just want to personally thank you on behalf of the council members, how much we appreciate how you represent us and for saving us a lot of money this summer. So thank you so much. Let me read this, and then I'll let you have the say. Whereas on occasion, the Memphis City Council sees fit to honor organizations that are making significant contributions to our community, and Kids in Technology is an organization certainly deserving of recognition. And whereas Kids in Technology And whereas Kids in Technology, a five oh one C three nonprofit organization founded by award-winning scientist and educator Jacqueline Thomas Smith, has been a pioneering force in STEM education since its founding in two thousand and two, empowering students, teachers, and communities through innovative, hands-on programs that promote real-world learning and technological literacy. And whereas Kids in Technology has remained steadfast in its mission to cultivate authentic STEM education through its STEM in Schools program, providing in-school tutoring and enrichment for K through fifth grade students, closing academic gaps in math, science, and reading using real kits and hands-on learning. The organization's STEM enrichment program offers after-school and weekend enrichment opportunities, providing STEM kits, creative tech challenges, and hands-on learning for students in grades three through eight. And whereas in twenty twelve, Kids Technology started Girls Pursuing Science, GPS, a groundbreaking social enterprise empowering over five thousand young girls to explore STEM and entrepreneurship through the innovative BOSS, which stands for Beauty of STEM Series curriculum. This program inspires girls to apply scientific concepts in cosmetic chemistry and business development, instilling confidence, curiosity, and a mindset of innovation. And whereas the organization has boldly expanded its mission to meet the demands of the future, launching forward-thinking initiatives like the STEM AI Academy, a twelve-month AI training programs for students ages twelve through twenty-one, preparing young leaders to build ethical world, real-world AI applications that solve pressing community challenges. And that's worthy of a hand. Absolutely. Oh my goodness. And whereas in the summer of twenty twenty five, this summer, Kids in Technology students were recognized by local news media for their work developing the Summer Link app for the City of Memphis, which assisted in providing a streamlined check-in process and event management solution for our employee program. Events for hundreds of students, saving an estimated one hundred thousand dollars in operational costs. Absolutely, absolutely. Brilliance, brilliance, brilliance. Whereas through its signature program, STEM in Schools, STEM in Richmond, Girls Pursuing STEM, Girls Pursuing Science, excuse me, and STEM AI Academy, Kids in Technology has equipped thousands of students and educators with the tools and experience needed to thrive in a rapidly evolving tech-driven world. And whereas Kids in Technology embodies the principles of access, student-centered learning, ethical innovation, and community partnerships, striving toward a vision where every child enjoys unrestricted access to transformative, future-ready STEM education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Memphis City Councilments of Equity and Excellence and their ongoing leadership in shaping the next generation of innovators, entrepreneurs, and global citizens. Adopted September ninth, twenty twenty five, Rhonda Logan, Memphis City Council, District One. Thank you all so much. Let's give them a hand, everyone. That deserves a standing ovation. Y'all turn around and salute it. I think that deserves a standing ovation. Let's support them.
Good evening, everyone. I am Jacqueline Thomas Smith, and I'm the Founder and Executive Director of Kids in Technology and Girls Pursuing Science. And I just want to extend a thank you to my council members, Ford, and of course, Councilwoman Logan, for having the insight just to honor us for what we're doing for the City of Memphis, and we will continue this program. And as you guys do funding for next year, please don't forget us. And we thank you for the funding that you did give us last year and for the youth program and for the youth coming to our program and doing what they're doing. You can see that we have some really smart students here in Shelby County in Memphis. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Madam Camp Controller, please show that approved by acclamation. Colleagues, please forgive me. I was so excited to jump right in that I completely skipped my intro, so if you would, please indulge me now. I'm going to go through that. Welcome to the September ninth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of the Memphis City Council. Meetings of the Council shall be conducted in orderly manner to ensure the public has the full opportunity to be heard and the deliberate process of the Council is retained at all times. Sergeant Arms has meeting agendas available upfront, as well as comment request cards for members of the public wishing to be heard on a specific item. All those wishing to speak on an item must turn in their comment card to the Sergeant at Arms before the item is called. If you are not here to speak on a specific item, you can note your request to give general comment at the end of the meeting. As Chair, I will only recognize citizens that properly register to speak by submitting a completed comment request card to the Sergeant at Arms. Members of the audience and persons addressing the Council will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory, personal, slanderous, or profane comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. The chairperson of the Council may maintain order by giving any persons who are in violation of the stated rules of decorum a warning to cease any violative conduct in order to leave the Council's chambers or by giving an order for security personnel to remove any disruptive person in the Council's chambers who refuses to leave voluntarily. These rules are posted on the doors as you enter the chamber and as you pick up comment cards. An example of an eleven-by-seventeen poster is also posted on the door. Signs larger than the permitted size are prohibited and will be removed from the chamber. Holds. Item twenty-two has been withdrawn. Item twenty-three will be held until September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Colleagues, if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Today, we pause to honor and remember the life of Paul Trobridge Gillespie Jr., a man whose joy for life, deep love for family and friends, and steadfast commitment to his community touched everyone he met. Trow had a gift for connection. He made each person feel like the most important person in the room, filling every gathering with warmth, laughter, and a generous spirit. Whether on the football field, in his business career, or through decades of service to Memphis, he lived out his belief that to whom much is given, much is required. We remember a devoted husband, father, grandfather, brother, and friend, a man who was never better than when he was surrounded by those he loved. His legacy of service, leadership, and kindness will endure in his family, his church, and in this greater Memphis community that he cared for so deeply. At this time, please let us join together in a moment of silence to honor his life, his memory, and the example he leaves behind. May his family, including his son, Representative John Gillespie, find comfort, and may his memory continue to be a blessing. If you would join me in a moment, as a moment of silence, please. Thank you, colleagues. All right, now back to the agenda. Madam Camp Controller, would you please call item two?
Item number two is a resolution approving an honorary street name change of Scott Street from Broad Avenue to Nathan Avenue for Mr. Noble H. Owens Sr., District Five, Super District Nine. This resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Warren, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Councilwoman Spinoza, you're recognized.
Check, check. There you go. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it's an honor to be here today and read this on behalf of Councilwoman Warren, Dr. Warren. So I'll get to it. Whereas, when worthy circumstances arise, the Memphis City Council approves the naming of specified public roads to honor citizens in the community for their extraordinary achievements. And Noble H. Owens is someone who is certainly worthy of such recognition. Whereas, in nineteen twelve, Noble H. Owens Sr. had a vision to open its own, his own funeral home. Got to lift this up so I can see. Realizing this dream at first in a small house in the Bing Hampton neighborhood in Memphis, Tennessee. And whereas in nineteen eighteen, Mr. Owens and his wife Felicia had a son, Noble H. Owens Jr., the younger Mr. Owens graduated from Manassas High School and went on to obtain a degree in English Education from Tennessee State University. Returning to Memphis, he would ultimately teach at his high school on water during a twenty-five-year teaching career. And whereas, in addition to serving the Bing Hampton neighborhood through the funeral home, Noble H. Owens Sr. began hosting an annual picnic for the community. In the Christmas tree and Thanksgiving seasons, the funeral home would give food to needy families. It also would provide funeral services for those in the community who could not afford to pay. And whereas, in addition to teaching, Noble H. Owens Jr. also worked with his father at the funeral home, helping to lead the business for eleven years. When the elder Mr. Owens died in nineteen sixty-seven, his son took the lead role, moving the business forward with the motto he coined, "Serving with compassion, dignity, and excellence." In nineteen eighty-three, Noble H. Owens Jr. received the Tennessee State Funeral Directors and Morticians Association Memorial Award, as well as recognition of his life's work from Tennessee House of Representatives. And whereas, after Mr. Owens Jr.'s passing in nineteen eighty-three, his wife Laura ran the funeral home for thirty-one years. N. H. Owens and Son Funeral Home, Inc. is now a thriving business in the heart of Bing Hampton, owned by Noble H. Owens Jr.'s daughter Cheryl and Inobrah Owens, and still dedicated to serving the community in every way. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Memphis, Tennessee, that in recognition of the lasting and continuing contributions of the Owens family in the Bing Hampton community, Scott Street between Broad Avenue and Nathan Avenue shall be designated and always remembered as Noble H. Owens Street. Be it further resolved that the city engineer is requested to affix suitable signs, so designating such public road. Given by our hand and under the great seal of the City of Memphis this ninth day of September twenty twenty five, again, on behalf of Dr. Warren, and also on behalf of me and the Council, congratulations. Yep, thanks so much.
I want everybody here to know, this is a big deal. It's a big deal for my family. It's a big deal for the Bing Hampton community because this community means everything to us and always has, ever since my family moved into Memphis back in the early nineteen hundreds. I want to give a sincere thank you to Councilwoman Warren, Councilwoman Spinoza, and every single council member on this board because I really want y'all to know this has deep meaning for me for two reasons. One, you're acknowledging the contributions of my late father and my grandfather to not only the Bing Hampton community, but also Memphis. But also because, if you didn't know, I used to work here at the City Council. I was a senior legislative analyst for four years before moving across the street to the Downtown Memphis Commission in Marketing. So it's like coming home for me, and I really, really enjoy seeing the faces that I work with. So thank you so much. It's from the bottom of my heart. I thank you all. And I want to tell you a few things because my father was a very special person. He believed in entrepreneurship, education, and English communications. Because of the English, and he taught twelfth-grade English at Manassas, and he made me speak correct English all the time, I pursued a career in communications. And I'm semi-retired from that, but I still correct people online. I want y'all to know that. And there's a few things that weren't included in the resolution about my dad as a father, and I'm going to be very brief. There's some things he used to say that stuck with me. One was, "Watch yourself, small fry. Clean up your room. Don't make us late for school while you're ironing your clothes," because I did not like wrinkles. Every time a wise man is born, a fool is born. You're not going out tonight. You're having dinner with your family. And I'm saying all that to say, these things have resonated with me all of my life. And I want to give a special thanks to Juan Taylor, the manager of our funeral home, because he's been a godsend. He's handled things with families that don't have money to pay. He's handled murders. He's handled everything for us so beautifully and with integrity. Because my father and my grandfather, they lived by this saying, "We serve with compassion, dignity, and excellence." So I'm encouraging all of you to remember those three words, compassion, dignity, and excellence. Again, I want to thank you, and I'm hoping that this street sign between, on Scott Street between Nathan and Broad will remind the youth of community, of the history of Owens Funeral Home, so they can pursue and chase their own entrepreneurship dreams. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Councilman Ford Sr., you're recognized.
Appreciate you, Chair. Dean, yeah, I ain't telling our age, but yeah, you were here when I was here before, so you know how long ago that's been. I knew your daddy very well. When you're talking about the funeral business, Canali, that's when everything was just what she just said, how you handle families. Ron, I've been knowing you for, ooh, we all worked together, which goes back, I knew your daddy before you were born. So I'm telling my age, not the other, but hey, he's so deserving and everything else, and we loved him, and he was one of a kind, okay? During those days, I got pictures of your daddy, the old pictures. I got to bring them down and let some of y'all see all the real undertakers. Appreciate you so much. I just had to say that, and you know I love you. All right.
And words. And all of those that I didn't get to say hello to that I know from way back when, I'm going to say hello before I go. So thank you.
Thank you. Madam Camp Controller, if you will, please call item number three.
Item number three is a resolution honoring the Economic Development Growth Engine for Memphis and Shelby County, Edge, for receiving the twenty twenty-four CDFA Distinguished Development Finance Agency Award. This resolution is sponsored by Chairman Canali.
Chairman Canali, you are recognized at this time.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. If I can get my Edge family to come forward, please. Whereas, the Memphis City Council is proud to recognize organizations that exemplify outstanding leadership, innovation, and dedication to economic and community development. And whereas, the Council of Development Finance Agencies is a national association dedicated to the advancement of development finance and annually recognizes outstanding agencies through its Distinguished Development Finance Agency Awards. And whereas, the Economic Development Growth Engine for Memphis and Shelby County has been named the recipient of the twenty twenty-four Distinguished Development Finance Agency Award by the CFDA. And whereas, Edge was created in two thousand and eleven to unite public and private entities in the mission of driving economic advancement and prosperity throughout Memphis and Shelby County with a focus on attracting investments, creating and retaining jobs, raising wages, revitalizing neighborhoods, supporting small businesses, and leveraging the Port of Memphis and Foreign Trade Zone Seventy-Seven. And whereas, Edge has successfully implemented innovative financing and incentive programs, including pilot incentives, TIF districts, intercity economic development loans, industrial revenue bonds, and foreign trade zone benefits that have made a measurable impact across our community. And whereas, since its creation, Edge has helped create and retain more than forty-one thousand jobs, directed over eight hundred and seventy-two million dollars in spending with minority and women-owned businesses, attracting more than eight point three billion dollars in capital investment, and generated over one point nine billion dollars in new tax revenue to strength in Memphis and Shelby County. And whereas, under the leadership of President Joanne Massey and the dedicated Edge team, the agency continues to serve as a catalyst for economic opportunity, growth, and innovation across our community. And whereas, the two thousand and twenty-four CDFA National Development Finance Summit in Baltimore, Maryland will formally recognize Edge for its outstanding leadership, service, and contributions to the economic prosperity of Memphis and Shelby County. to the economic prosperity of Memphis and Shelby County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Memphis City Council congratulates Edge for Memphis and Shelby County, President Joanne Massey, and the entire Edge team, which are standing around me here today, certainly not inclusive of everyone, but most everyone, for receiving the 2024 CDFA Distinguished Development Finance Agency and commends their ongoing dedication to building a stronger, more prosperous Memphis and Shelby County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Edge as a token of the council's respect, gratitude, and recognition of this historic achievement, adopted September 9, 2025. To President Massey, congratulations to you. We are so proud of you, the work that you have done and continue to do. And to all your team, this is for all of you. This is a big congratulations to all of you. We are so proud of you, and we so much appreciate the work that you do for Memphis and Shelby County each and every day.
Thank you all so much. It is our honor to serve you and to be your Economic Development Agency. As it was said in the resolution, "Public and private partnerships are where we meet success." Leadership is a journey, and it's not a solo journey. And so I wanted to have my entire team here to be recognized for the really hard work that they do every day, getting up every morning and focusing on how we create a thriving community for Memphis and Shelby County. Recognizing that, as we are Edge, we also have our Port of Memphis in Shelby County, Mr. Randy Richardson, who's the executive director there. And Randy, and I just want the council to know this, and thank you, Chairman, for also giving Randy recognition for his 35 years of service to the Port of Memphis. And as our team, as Chairman said, this is, some of our team members are at the office, I think it's 5 o'clock, continuing their work. But our team is extended, not just by those who are, you know, on our payroll, but who are consultants as well. And so you all know, and you're really the first champions to say, if we don't tell our own story and tell our own successes, we will, no one will know, like, they will not know what's happening. So I want to recognize Beth Wilson and Wilson Public Relations, who is our consultant for marketing and public relations, helping to get the story out there, who was a tremendous part of us winning the CDFA Award, that national award for all agencies. They chose Edge because of all the work that we do with small businesses, all the way up to corporations. And so Beth and her team are here as a part of our team, just recognizing them as well. And so I only leave you with this, as I've said before, and we're almost, believe it or not, one year to the day that you all appointed me in this role as president and CEO. And it has truly been an honor, but we have so much more work to do. And so not only is it the Edge team and the Port team and Wilson, but it's this council, the administration, and everyone that is a part of this community. And so we thank you all so much for recognizing us today, and we're going to get back to work. Thank you.
Councilman Smiley, you're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. First, I want to thank the Edge team for the work that they're doing. I think if Councilman Martavis Jones was here, he would be proud of the work that you're doing. But he will also challenge you to continue to do what's right in the community, continue to put our community first. And I just want to acknowledge the folks from here who get off at 5. I want to know it's after 5 o'clock. So thank you for being here after workouts, showing your dedication to our community. Much love and success.
Please show that it is approved by acclamation, Madam Comptroller. Madam Comptroller, if you will, please call the consent agenda.
Our consent agenda begins with item number six. A resolution approving the final plat for Watford Industrial Park Plan Development Phase II, PD 20000-370, and accepting bond as security. There is a request for same-night minutes. The contract number is CR-5480. Item number seven is a resolution approving the final plat for St. Jude Advanced Research Center, and accepting bond as security. There is a request for same-night minutes, and that contract number is CR-5481. Madam Chair, that conclude, Mr. Chairman, that concludes our consent agenda items.
Councilwoman Green.
Right as I'm chewing a skittle. Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make an announcement in a request of something that is not on our agenda. At the end of committee, we held an item for two weeks that was sponsored by Councilman Warren regarding Region 1. I have spoken with General Counsel Van Turner at Region 1. He has agreed to hold the item for four weeks to when Councilman Warren can be back and to not expend any money or sign any contracts that would affect Councilman Warren's request in that interim. So if, instead of two weeks, if we can hold it for four weeks, because I know Councilman Warren is going to be out in two weeks. And I've talked to Councilman Warren, and he is fine with that request as well. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. The committee met. There was a favorable recommendation, and I so move.
Consent agenda was moved by Swearingen, Washington, seconded by Green colleagues. Please cast your votes for the consent agenda.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please read the fiscal consent agenda.
On our fiscal consent agenda, we have item number eight, "A Resolution to Accept and Appropriate Additional Grant Funds in the Amount of $1,432,800 from the State of Tennessee specifically for additional bonus money for the in-service training program, which was for the training of 1,791 commission officers from 2024, all districts and all super-districts. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services, and there is a request for same-night minutes. Item number nine is a resolution to accept and appropriate additional grant funds in the amount of $7,200 from the State of Tennessee specifically for the in-service training program, which trained nine commission officers from the previous year, all districts and all super-districts. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. There is a request for same-night minutes. Item number 10 is a resolution to accept grant funds in the amount of $24,395 from the Shelby County Government through the Tennessee Office of Justice Programs, all districts and all super-districts. This resolution is sponsored by Police Services. There is a request for same-night minutes. Item number 11 is a resolution to accept and appropriate an allocation of $100,000 in the FY '26 budget, chargeable to award 13403 from the Cities for Financial Empowerment Fund to create the Memphis Blueprint for Advancing Wealth Equity and Financial Empowerment, all districts and all super-districts. This resolution is sponsored by Housing and Community Development. There is a request for same-night minutes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes your fiscal consent agenda items.
Madam Comptroller, we're going to add, 39 was added to fiscal consent. If you'd read that into the agenda as well, please.
Item number 39 to be added on is a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2026 operating budget, all council districts. This resolution is sponsored by Councilmembers Smiley, Swearingen, Washington, and Canali. And there is a request for same-night minutes for this item also, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. Colleagues, that concludes our fiscal consent, items eight through 11 plus 39. Madam Vice Chair, you are recognized.
Thank you, Chair. There was a favorable recommendation to accept all of these items, and I so move.
Fiscal consent was moved by Swearingen, Washington, seconded by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Show Cooper Sutton as a yes, please, as well.
Thank you. Please show Cooper Sutton as voting yes on this item.
Madam Comptroller, please take us to the MLGW fiscal consent, items 12 through 21.
Item number 12 is a resolution approving ratification and change to contract number 12487 LNG exterior painting of tanks with TMI coatings ink to ratify and expand the scope of the current contract in the funded amount of $13,755.23. Item number 13 is a resolution approving extension to contract number 12142 Card Payment Processing Services to Card Connect LLC to extend the current contract in the funded amount Item number 14 is a resolution awarding purchase order for three conductor cable to universal scaffold and equipment in the amount of $529,563. Item number 15 is a resolution awarding purchase order for horizontal LED 200-watt luminaries to Engineered Ceiling Components LLC in the amount of $232,404. Item number 16 is a resolution awarding contract number 12555 external auditing services to CBIZ, CPA's PC, in the funded amount of $875,000. Item number 17 is a resolution approving ratification and extension to contract number 12167 Retirement and Pension System and Other Post-Employment Benefits OPEF audits with Forvis Mazars, formerly Dixon Hughes Goodman LLP, to ratify and extend the current contract in the funded amount of $74,200. Item number 18 is a resolution awarding 24-month purchase order for utility bill paper to MAC Papers LLC in the funded amount of $382,470. Item number 19 is a resolution awarding 24-month purchase order for utility bill mailing and return envelopes to MAC Papers LLC in the amount of $561,594. Item number 20 is a resolution approving an annual salary in the amount of $167,211 for a new hire to fill the vacant position of Customer Experience and Energy Services Director, Strategic Initiatives and Execution. And our final item is number 21, a resolution approving extension, change number three, to contract number 12314 Broker of Record for Cyber Insurance and Other Insurance Coverages with Willis Towers Watson Southeast Incorporated to extend the current contract in the funded amount of $147,000. Mr. Chairman, that concludes our MLGW consent items.
Thank you, Madam Comptroller. I would like to make note that item 20 on MLGW fiscal consent is same-night minutes. Councilwoman Walker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The committee met with a favorable recommendation.
MLGW was moved by Walker, seconded by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, please cast your votes, members, for the MLGW fiscal consent.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Swearingen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Councilwoman Walker, do you want to be recognized? Okay. That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please take us to item number four.
Item number four is a resolution approving the appeal of Dr. Lynette P. Williams on behalf of the Acclina Lakeview Gardens CDC, Inc., seeking to overturn the action of the Memphis and Shelby County Land Use Control Board approving a re-subdivision of a portion of Lot 1 of the Save-A-Lot subdivision to create Lot 3, made up of 0.82 acres on the north end at the subject property located at 4696 South Third Street. This resolution is sponsored by the Division of Planning and Development. It was held from July 8. The case number is S25-10.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met. There was a favorable recommendation. They were able to work out an agreement with the opposition, and so I so move.
I'm not sure.
Item was moved by Swearingen, Washington, seconded by Green. I've got three public comment cards, but Mr. Ragsdale, just want to go over, a yes vote is in favor of the project as amended, which is what was agreed upon between both parties, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. Brett Ragsdale with the Division of Planning and Development. We did introduce a subsequent resolution that approves the subdivision and restricts the uses of lube oil change facility and convenience store with gas pumps. So a yes vote does those things.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. Dr. Lynette Williams, followed by Winnie Hardaway and Dr. Kimberly Owens Pearson.
I'm Dr. Lynette Williams. I'm the Executive Director of the Acclina Lakeview Gardens CDC, 5175 Horn Lake Road, Memphis, Tennessee. And I just want to commend the city council, as well as the Department of Planning and Development, that we actually came to an agreement. We were in opposition of this subdivision because of the threat to Save-A-Lot, as well as putting gas pumps, as well as the applications stated for an oil change facility. This particular area is in a well-protection zone, and we are very concerned about our environment in that area, as well as being able to service the community as far as the grocery store is concerned, since we are in a desert, a food desert in that area. And we'd just like to thank everybody for the agreement that we came to, and especially Councilman Ford, as well as Councilman Cooper Sutton, as far as getting us to an agreement. And we agreed to not have a gas station there, as well as not have an oil change facility. But we are amenable to EV stations there, as well as an office strip mall or a coffee shop or whatever else they want to put there, and they can sell it without having any problems. And the community will be supportive, because we had at least over 300 people in opposition to this particular project. But we appreciate the concern and everything, and we really appreciate the fact that the city council did work with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Ms. Hardaway.
Good afternoon. I am Winnie Wade Hardaway. And I'm excited right now. Y'all just don't know. So I'm gonna say, you've seen me angry, and this is me happy. I want to thank you, thank you, thank you. 38109, look, 38109 Westwood. Yes, we're here, and we've been asking to be a part. This is a positive thing. We can go back to the community and say, they're working with us. They're hearing us. We're at the table. We're being heard. We don't need oil. We don't need another gas station on Third Street. We need more food. We are in a desert. Thank you. And I like the fact that you heard me when I said, you put it in writing. I don't want them to come back and do something different after they said.
Ms. Hardaway. Ms. Hardaway, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Will you give me your address, please?
Forty-six-twenty-four Honeysuckle, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-oh-nine.
Go ahead.
Are we good? Thank you.
Dr. Kimberly Pearson.
Hello. Dr. Kimberly Owens Pearson, eleven-ten Starline, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-zero-nine. So this is a good thing. All right. So we have it in writing, no more gas stations, no lube, oil, whatever. Very good. We keep coming down here, and finally, something was approved that we agree with. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pearson. Seeing no members in the queue, that concludes our public comment on that item. Madam Comptroller, please prepare the voting screen. Hold the screen one second. Councilwoman Logan, you're recognized.
I want to mention, yes is that we are in favor. Substitute has been amended, that's what I was asking. Okay, thank you.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Swearengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item five. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All right, take us to item thirty-two, please.
Item number thirty-two on our add-ons is a resolution to approve the appropriation of funds of one million, five hundred thousand dollars from Brooks Museum FY 2026 CIP Project Number PK-24106, Contract Construction District Seven, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by the administration, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met. There was a favorable recommendation, and I so move.
Item was moved by Vice Chair Swearengen, Washington, seconded by Easter Thomas. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for thirty-two.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Walker, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item thirty-three.
Item number thirty-three is a resolution to appropriate five hundred thousand dollars in geo-bonds for Memphis Animal Shelter Facility upgrades and the outfitting of Memphis Animal Shelter Animal Control Van, CIP GA-01036, District One, Super District Nine. This resolution is sponsored by the administration, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, you're recognized.
Yes. The committee met and approved, and I so moved. Oh, got it? I just pushed it. Oh, Easter Thomas, thank you.
All right, thirty-three was moved by Cooper Sutton, seconded by Easter Thomas. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Swearengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item thirty-four.
Item number thirty-four is a resolution to transfer and appropriate funds in the amount of three million, seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred dollars for CIPP Non-Kona, sixty-six feet, Project Number SW-24205, to fund emergency rehabilitation of deteriorated sewer lines, District Three, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by the administration, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Smiley, you're recognized.
I'm just deeply grateful that the Chair would call me. The committee met, recommended approval, and I so move.
Thirty-four was moved by Smiley, seconded by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Swearengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item thirty-five.
Item number thirty-five is a resolution to transfer and appropriate construction funds in the amount of three million, twenty-five thousand, three hundred, sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents from Drainage ST Cover Line, Project Number ST-02035, for upgrading the drainage system in the Morningside Place neighborhood, District Five, Super District Nine. This resolution is sponsored by the administration. There is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Smiley, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommend approval, not to move.
Thirty-five was moved by Smiley, seconded by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Swearengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. And Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Comptroller, please call item thirty-six.
Item number thirty-six is a resolution accepting insurance proceeds totaling nine hundred, twenty thousand, one hundred and nine dollars for damage suffered to Bass Pro's Chillers Number Two and Number Three, District Seven, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by the administration. There is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Smiley, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. Committee met, recommend approval, not to move.
Thirty-six was moved by Smiley, seconded by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Swearengen, Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes.
Please show Councilmember White as voting yes on this item.
That's all right. Madam Comptroller, please call item thirty-seven.
Item number thirty-seven is a resolution to allocate fifteen thousand dollars annually for five years from solid waste community funds to Clean Memphis, Inc., nonprofit agency. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the administration, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Committee met, recommend approval, and I so move. There's Councilwoman Logan in the queue on this particular item as well.
All right, item was moved by Smiley, seconded by Swearengen, Washington. Councilwoman Logan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. Earlier today, in council and committee, we discussed this. But after we voted, found out, or had a discussion about Memphis City Beautiful doing the exact same work and being underfunded. And so I want to put a hold on this. I know they're asking for the same nine minutes, but if we have a division or department that is doing the exact same thing, and they're needing funds, and we're, you know, giving these funds, seventy-five thousand, elsewhere for the same thing, I really want us to explore that and to get a little bit more information about it before we make this decision. And I so move.
Okay, without objection, we're going to hold item thirty-seven until September twenty-second. Any objection to that? Twenty... I'm gonna come on the twenty-second. Thank you. All right, that item is held. Madam Comptroller, please call item thirty-eight.
Item number thirty-eight is a resolution to create an advisory board related to public use funds from artificial intelligence properties. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, and there is a request for same night minutes.
Councilwoman White, you're recognized.
Yes, the committee met and recommended approval with the amendment for same night minutes, and I so move. As amended.
All right, thirty-eight was moved by White, seconded by Green. I've got some comment request cards, but I'm gonna go to Councilwoman Green first.
Thank you, Chair. I just, in committee, I asked to be added as a sponsor, and so I wanted that for the record. Thank you. Chair, can you add me as well as a co-sponsor?
Yes. Easter Thomas added as well.
Chairman, I thought at the committee that they all wanted to be added as sponsors, everyone?
Add committee.
Add committee.
Okay. All right. Sarah Gladney. Name and address, Ms. Gladney, you have two minutes.
My name is Sarah Gladney, seventeen-fifty-one East Box Town Road, three-eight-one-oh-nine. And my question is to the council, I would like to know, why did you accept twenty-five percent from Mayor Paul Young's offer to not only the Box Town community, but part of the White Haven community? We have been overburdened for years, and we have worked hard in our community. And to breathe is one of the things that we should deserve. We deserve to breathe clean air. So can you tell me how the twenty-five percent will be distributed among multiple communities? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gladney. Winnie Hardaway? Name and address, Ms. Hardaway, you have two minutes.
Let's do it a second time. Winnie Wade Hardaway, forty-six-twenty-four Honeysuckle, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-oh-nine. I'm standing before you today because on the thirty-eight, Ms. Green and Mrs. White, I'm understanding this is an advisory board. I believe the very first time I came down here to the council, I said I wanted to be a part of this. I want to sit at the table. I want to be in a part of the decision-making of three-eight-one-oh-nine. I understand this is an advisory board that probably consists of you all, but at some point, who was the advisory board consisting of? Maybe that needs to be my first question. Who was the advisory board? Who did the advisory board consist of? I'm okay with how you broke it down. Come on, tell me who. Who are directing my questions to now?
So, Ms. Wendy? I created this Environment Advisory Board, and... Can you hear me? Okay. And so, the Public Advisory Board was talked about in committee, and the first meeting of our advisory board shall consist of two single districts? Two single districts? One Super District Council member, recommended by the chairperson of Memphis City Council, three community leaders. Oh, she got it. Good. You got the... Because we had to make some, do some changes to make sure that they reflect in the ordinance as well. And so, would you like me to continue since you have it in your hand?
I'll read it, I'll get back...
You want me to read it?
No, no, I'll read it and I'll...
Dr. Pearson, you want me to continue? Okay. Three community leaders selected by the self-nominated city council member, the City of Memphis mayor or designee, the City of Memphis chief financial officer or designee, and the City of Memphis general service director. So that would be your advisory board would be set up, and you have a copy. And if anyone else would like a copy, we can get you a copy, because it had to be revised, okay?
It has been revised?
This is it. That's it. This is your copy.
Okay.
Yes. Any further questions?
Yes.
Yes. So this has not been, we have not selected anyone at this time. This is brand-new.
Exactly. And that's why I'm saying, I understand all of this is new to all of us, especially me. But I'm saying, now that I know who's on it, these are the individuals that I'll be asking the questions and who will be representing me at the table in the future, correct?
Once we get everything set up, and I heard your request to be at the table.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Wendy. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Dr. Kimberly Pearson.
Say it again. Dr. Kimberly Owens Pearson, eleven-ten Starline, Memphis, Tennessee, three-eight-one-zero-nine. In reference to thirty-eight and having the advisory board, I was here on August fifth, and I was highly upset in reference to the twenty-five percent, because I thought that we are the one that take the brunt of the pollution, and we should not just be given twenty-five percent. It was still passed without a second to our amendment Cooper Sutton presented. So I'm hoping today, it seemed like good energy, good vibes are in the air. So I'm hoping that this amendment where we are at the table with this advisory board, because we keep showing up, and we're the ones who are impacted, can be at the table. And so that's why we are here. So hopefully, it passes, and we all have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Billy Sally.
She had to leave.
Okay. Keishon Pearson.
Pointing for clarification before I get started. On the address, because it is written, is it possible that I just say the street name, or what's the protocol there?
Name and address, please.
Okay. Keishon Pearson, thirty-eight-thirty-one Masterson. We good? Yes, sir. You may proceed. All right. So as the leader of Memphis Community Against Pollution, the one thing that has stood out in the entire saga of XAI and its data centers is complete and overall lack of community engagement. What has also permeated into policy that was recently passed in the Community Benefits Ordinance is the continued lack of community engagement. And so what this ordinance seeks to do is to provide some kind of restitution and to involve the community even more in processes where they get to decide what happens with the money. Twenty-five percent is not nearly enough to make a dent or to atone for the pollution that we have to breathe in in three-eight-one-oh-nine. We are receiving a hundred percent of the pollution, and only twenty-five percent of whatever will come out to be from these tax rebates or the tax money that's going to be allocated. Going forward in the future, I believe our government should reflect the people and their choices, and they should be included in the process. It's a government for the people, by the people. We should not operate like corporations. I am confident that this will pass, and I feel that I do want to extend thank you to Councilwoman Cooper Sutton and everyone else involved in this. But I do urge us to continue to work with the community and not without them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Madam Comptroller, that takes us to the end of public comments, so please take us to the voting screen for item thirty-eight.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Please show Councilmember Ford as voting, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please, excuse me, please call item forty.
Item number forty is a resolution to exempt all employees of the Division of Finance of the City of Memphis as the city's municipal finance department from the civil service rules and regulations outlined in sections three dash eight dash two through three dash eight dash six municide code of the Charter of the City of Memphis pursuant to section three dash eight dash two municide code of the Charter of the City of Memphis. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the administration, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, there was a favorable recommendation for this item, and I so move.
Item forty was moved by Vice Chair and seconded by Green, but it's still showing thirty-eight on my screen. Could you advance it, please, Madam Control? There you go. Move it again. There we go. All right. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for item forty.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Smiley, please show Councilmember Smiley as abstained. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. White, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes.
I've got you, I'm putting it in the system.
Madam Controller, please call item forty-one.
Item number forty-one is a resolution approving transportation trustee agreement and trustees. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Transportation Committee. There is a request for same-night minutes.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, there was a favorable recommendation, and I so move.
Forty-one was moved by Vice Chair JSW, seconded by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas abstained. Ford, yes. Logan, yes. Smiley, yes. Walker, yes. And Chairman Canali, yes. Please show Vice Chairwoman Janice Swearingen Washington as voting, yes.
White is a yes, Green is a yes?
Okay, we're gonna put those in here. White is a yes. And Green is a yes, and Swearingen Washington.
That item passes. All right. Madam Controller, please take us back to our regular agenda, starting with item, nope, twenty-three. Nope. Twenty-five.
Item number twenty-five is a resolution amending and appropriating pilot proceeds from the Health, Educational, and Housing Facility Board of the City of Memphis, Tennessee, up to but not to exceed one million five hundred thousand dollars, chargeable to the FY twenty-two-six budget by appropriating funds to the Division of Housing and Community Development Affordable Housing Program Account. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Councilwoman Logan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, recommended approval, and I so move.
All right, twenty-five was moved by Logan, seconded by Swearingen Washington. I do have one comment card. Susan Morisi. Name and address, you have two minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon, my name is Susan Morisi. I live at one nine six seven Woodchase Cove, three eight zero one six. So I just saw this when I came in here, and I'm not sure I'm understanding it, but I'm thinking you're saying money you get from a pilot is gonna go to health, education, and housing, and I am on the, uh, Better Transit for a Better Memphis, and also the transit part of MICA, and I'm just telling everyone, it has been our understanding for over a year that funds from pilots were gonna go to transit. So if that's not true, it's not true, but we have thought that for a long time. Thank you.
Ms. Morisi? There, you are correct that there are some expiring pilots that are going to transit vision. That is a correct statement, but I don't know, I don't have an exact list in front of me. I'll get that list and we'll get that to you.
But it's not all of them.
No.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for item twenty-five.
Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Chairman Canali, yes. Please show Councilmember Cooper Sutton as voting, yes, on this item. And I have put that in the system for you.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item twenty-six.
Item number twenty-six is a resolution to accept and appropriate the sum of one million five hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars funded by Shelby County Commission for the Southwest Twin Redevelopment Award one one five five one, project CD zero one one zero four, District Six, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Councilwoman Logan.
Chair, the committee met, recommended approval, and I so move.
Twenty-six has been moved by Logan, seconded by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item twenty-seven.
Item number twenty-seven is a resolution appropriating bond proceeds and accrued interest in the amount of one million four hundred twelve thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and sixty-nine cents for additional project costs in connection with the Fairgrounds Tourism Development Zone, TDZ Award one one five five nine, project CD one eight three hundred, District Four, Super District Eight. This resolution is sponsored by the administration.
Councilwoman Logan, you're recognized.
Again, Chair, the Housing and Community Development Committee met, recommended approval, and I so move. Thank you.
Twenty-seven was moved by Logan, seconded by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item twenty-eight.
Item number twenty-eight is a resolution to allocate two hundred thousand dollars in support of the Shelby County Environmental Courts Indigence Fund to assist in the reduction of blight in Memphis neighborhoods. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilwoman Cooper Sutton.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, there was a favorable recommendation, and I so move.
Item was moved by Swearingen Washington, seconded by Green. Councilwoman Green, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to request to be added as a sponsor. As...
Please add Green as a sponsor. Councilwoman Cooper Sutton, I see you over there motioning to me. Did you want to speak?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
All right. Seeing no other members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen for twenty-eight. That item passes. Please add Councilwoman Logan as a co-sponsor of that. Twenty-eight. And please call item twenty-nine.
Item number twenty-nine is a resolution to allocate funding for neighborhood associations for anti-blight and beautification efforts. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Councilmember Smiley.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
The committee met, there was a favorable recommendation, and I so move.
Twenty-nine was moved by Swearingen Washington, seconded by Easter Thomas. Councilman Smiley, before you leave the chamber, would you like to speak on your item?
I believe in you.
All right, Madam Controller, please prepare the voting screen for item twenty-nine.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. And Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item thirty, with same-night minutes, please.
Item number thirty is a resolution to establish the Memphis City Council Community Grant Program for FY twenty-six. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by the Memphis City Council.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. I am excited to announce that we have finally reached a favorable recommendation for this item, and I so move.
Item thirty was moved by Swearingen Washington, seconded by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, members, please cast your votes. Item thirty.
Righty. Cooper Sutton, yes. Easter Thomas, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. And Chairman Canali, yes. And this is for same-night minutes, and it's as amended.
Correct. That item passes. Madam Controller, please call item thirty-one.
Item number thirty-one is a resolution to amend rules of procedure. All council districts, this resolution is sponsored by Chairman Canali. It was held from eight nineteen, and there is a request for same-night minutes.
Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair. The committee met, there was a favorable recommendation, and I so move.
Item was moved by Swearingen Washington, seconded by Cooper Sutton. Seeing no members in the queue, please prepare the voting screen.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. And Chairman Canali, yes.
That item passes. All right, colleagues, that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. I need to go back and do some cleanup. Item twenty-four, which I announced earlier, an executive was gonna be held till the second meeting in October, has now been withdrawn. Councilwoman Spinosa had to leave, but he did leave me. As the sponsor, he left me a letter wishing to withdraw item twenty-four. That brings us to our same-night minute items. Madam Vice Chair, you are recognized.
To the same-night minutes. All right. Our same-night minutes are two, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twenty, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one, and I so move.
Okay, that's a lot. We got all the... Same-night minutes were moved by JSW, seconded by Green. Seeing no members in the queue, members, please cast your votes for the same-night minutes.
Cooper Sutton, yes. Ford, yes. Green, yes. Logan, yes. Swearingen Washington, yes. Walker, yes. And Chairman Canali, yes.
Same-night minutes pass. Okay, colleagues, that brings us to our public comment portion of the meeting. We have a few cards. Emmeline Rogers. Followed by Alexandra Farmer. Name and address, you have two minutes.
Emmeline Rogers, six seventy West Drive, three eight one one two. Thank you for hearing our comments today. I have come as a representative of the Memphis Public Library's Workers United to ask again for your support in our request for a change to our status, so that we may no longer be classified as political appointees while serving as essential workers. Library workers have long been in the habit of inventing solutions to too hard problems with too few resources. We are creative thinkers out of necessity, political out of requirement, and passionate because of what we witness every day in our libraries. We have turned to you, the city council, to allow us the freedom to serve our communities to the best of our ability. We have chosen to unionize so that we can better support each other in our mission to never have someone leave our libraries with a question unanswered or a need unmet. A supermajority of our coworkers is waiting to hear back from the few of us who were able to take time away from our libraries to stand here and ask that you help us. They are waiting to hear that they're elected officials, that the people they have chosen to put into power are willing to do what it takes to protect us as the last societal safety net and the first place people turn to when they don't know how to dig themselves out of whatever tangle they're in. From homework to generational poverty, we offer up every last thing we have to our community. Please do not let us go home empty-handed. Allow the few of us here to go back to our coworkers with the promise of action and to be able to celebrate your investment in the well-being of our city. Please pressure the mayor, city HR, and every other person you know who has power over our branch of the city to do everything in their ability to change our status and ensure that we will never have to turn someone away from our Memphis Public Libraries with empty hands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Alexandra Farmer.
Alexandra Farmer, one zero four four Bruce Street, three eight one zero four. Hello again. I'm a public library worker, and I'm also here today as representative, representative of Memphis Public Libraries Workers United. My coworkers and I love our libraries, and we love serving the people of Memphis. That's why we're here, asking you to move forward with passing an ordinance to place a charter referendum on the twenty-two-six ballot so voters can officially recognize library workers as the civil servants we have always been. This change would give long-term security protections and rights to us as workers and to our union we are building together. and rights to us as workers and to our union we are building together. But we can't wait until then. The mayor could issue a new executive order granting us bargaining rights today, or city HR could reclassify us as civil service while the charter change moves forward. Either step would give us a fair chance to formalize what already exists, a united collective of library workers ready to make our library system stronger for the workers and the people of Memphis. We already have a supermajority ready to vote yes in a free and fair union election, and Memphis has always been a place where working people stand up for dignity, respect, and fairness, from the sanitation workers to today. We're asking you to carry that legacy forward by adding us to the next committee agenda and by moving ahead with our charter change, and yes, by each of you urging the mayor and the city to act now. Thank you for listening for our comments and requests today. We are very grateful for your leadership on this issue. Your support means everything as we keep fighting for our right to stand together and to represent ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Laura Bontrager.
Hi, I'm Laura Bontrager, 8492 East Askerson, 38018. Today I come before you as a member of NPL Workers United. Our issue is twofold. One, reclassification of library division workers from appointed to civil service with their years of service and their benefits intact, and without having to go through a rehiring process. And two, our right to act as a collective bargaining unit, which is now currently denied to us. To accomplish the former, we must have the city council call for a referendum to redefine our status as civil service. To accomplish the latter, we require the mayor's office to carve out an exemption to the executive order which denies us the right to form this bargaining unit. It's not hard. Clearly, we just saw, it's actually simple. This is why we absolutely must be on the city council agenda, because library workers are tired. We are tired, we are strained, we are stressed, and we are not protected. It feels like the world is burning down around us, and meanwhile, we just want to support our communities and protect our neighborhoods. We can't do that effectively when our livelihoods hang by a thread. With your help, we can achieve lasting change in our library system. We can change. This change will translate to our patrons, translate to our neighborhoods, and our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. LaMichael Wilson.
Good afternoon. My name is LaMichael Wilson. My address is 936 Kelly Circle, East in Memphis, Tennessee, 38111. I come before you this afternoon not just as a grieving son, but as a man whose soul has been shattered to its core by an act so cruel and so violating, so much that I struggle to find the words. I never thought that I would stand in a public space to speak about something so deeply personal and painful, but I'm here because I have to be, because what was done to my mother by a Memphis police officer after her death warrants not only answers but real tangible change. After learning of my mother's passing, I later discovered that a Memphis police officer used her personal cellphone to take a photo of her body, nude, lifeless, and vulnerable. Those words are hard to say. The reality is even harder to live with. In the 17 days since my mother's passing, I have endured the trauma of seeing her body after decomposition and again after the funeral home attempted reconstructive enhancements. But of these moments, but none of these moments were deeply painful, yet neither compares to the devastation of discovering images of my mother's deceased nude body with four electrode pads affixed to her from the EMTs taken with her personal cellphone by a vile and abusive police officer who violated her dignity in death. In what should have been a private moment, my mother, the woman I loved with all of my heart, was treated with disrespect, as though her dignity no longer mattered. But let me be clear, it did matter, and it does matter. Not only was she my mother, she was a sister, and she was a grandmother, and so much more. She laughed, she cried, she lived with purpose. She deserved peace in her death, and she was violated in the most vulnerable manner of her life, even in death. The officer intentionally took this picture of my mother in a moment when she could not no longer protect herself by a Memphis police officer who was supposed to protect my mother's dignity, not exploit it, by a Memphis police officer who was supposed to uphold the law, not break it. As citizens, we place our trust in first responders to care for us in the most fragile and helpless moments, and in death, when citizens cannot speak for themselves, that trust must be honored even more. But that was not my mother's case, and so I am pleading with you this evening to create strict enforceable policies that make it absolutely clear that this misuse of a deceased person's, that any misuse of a deceased person's property by any first responder, especially for unauthorized photos, is not just unethical, it's unforgivable. Because no family member should have to wonder why this was done, who saw the pictures, or even if the pictures will ever resurface. You have the opportunity to make sure no other family in Memphis is ever forced to experience the kind of suffering that I do. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, I'm extremely sorry to hear that, and please accept the sincerest condolences on behalf of all the city council on the loss of your mother. We can put you in touch with the proper person to speak with at MPD about that, if you'll stick around.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. LD Thompson, Sr.
Good evening. LD Thompson, Sr., 1660 Holmes Road, and you have my condolences too, sir. I'm coming behind you. Nevertheless, I'm here to say hello. This is my first time ever coming before the city council, and this is a great city that we all live in, and we definitely want to make it as great as it can possibly be. And since I have my two minutes, is it up yet? There we go. I want to introduce my wife. She's coming behind me, and we're here trying to make a simple request. The money that's going to be for the grant, we're asking, can a window be at least a certain period of time to allow other nonprofits other than ourselves to apply, have other nonprofits that are interested, and I want to try to help them the best way to try to do some things within the city positive. It's a one-week window, I was told.
Yes, sir. I think we can answer that question for you. What's the window to apply? 15th through the 26th of what month? September. The window to apply is between the 15th and 26th. You can find that information also on our website.
Right. So is it to where there's no type of request that could be granted to allow at least two weeks' time to submit where I can contact other nonprofits and let them know that there's a certain period of time that they have to, you know, have their documents in, which is, you know, your 501(c)(3) insurance?
Today's the 9th, so they'd have, they have 17 days to get it in.
Okay. I didn't know. I didn't get clarification. Okay.
Yes, sir.
So that was pretty much it, and I wanted to definitely work with some of the other council members in their other prospective districts and try to assist some of the other nonprofits that
Yes, sir.
don't have the knowledge that I have. So I still got enough, I still got a few minutes on, I mean, a few seconds, a few seconds.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just trying to use all my time, and I thank everybody for their hard work.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your care and concern. Mrs. Thompson, Ms. Davis Thompson? Name and address, you have two minutes, ma'am.
Yes. Good evening, members of Memphis City Council. I would also just like to add to, with the request of the submission for all of the 501(c)(3)'s.
Ms. Thompson, will you give us your name and address, please?
1660 East Holmes Road, Memphis, Tennessee, 116. Just to spell out all of the different requirements, any types of workshops or any certificates or whatever is necessary in order for us to qualify for submission, and that's all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Dr. Tara. I'm gonna give it a shot, okay? Tanggupun. Tanggupun? Tanggupun. Well, let's just say Dr. Tara. How about that?
Does this go any longer? There we go. Hi, my name is Dr. Tara Tanggupun, 4327 Elaine, Memphis, Tennessee, 3122. Regarding my background, I am a medical school graduate from the James H. Quillan College of Medicine at ETSU. I'm pursuing a career in obstetrics, gynecology, and women's preventative health. I'm also a public health advocate with a Master of Public Health from the University of Memphis School of Public Health specializing in social and behavioral sciences and health promotion. I'm here to ask for assistance with the stray animal population in Memphis, Tennessee. I've personally seen to the rescue of over 30 stray dogs, a dozen stray cats, and one pig. For the majority of these animals, I was able to locate the owners and educate them on the importance of spaying and neutering their pets, having them vaccinated, microchipping them should these animals find themselves lost on the streets again. Of the animals who had no owners, I worked as a found foster through MAS and had these animals spayed and neutered and adopted out to new forever homes. All of this is not enough. It's not enough to make even the slightest dent in the stray pet population on my street. In my area of the Berkeley Graham neighborhood in East Memphis, I could easily see upwards of a dozen stray dogs a day roaming in packs, fighting one another, dodging traffic. I see numerous posts online asking for help with a female pregnant cat who turned up on someone's doorstep, or a litter of kittens whose mother abandoned them, and now they need hour-to-hour care. According to Spay Memphis, one fertile cat and her offspring can produce 370,000 kittens in seven years. One fertile dog and her offspring can produce 67,000 puppies in six years. What we're doing as a society is not enough. We turn a blind eye. We say, I hope pup finds a way home. I hope kitty has a dry place to stay. What we need to do is primary prevention. We need to adopt spay, neuter, trap, neuter, release of these animals, of the cats, spay, neuter of the dogs. All of this really requires money, access to resources such as medical supplies, vet care, time, and working with the community. I ask that you please look into funding ways to provide more access to spay and neuter services. Please consider hiring more vets and technicians at our public facilities. Please look into coordinating with veterinary colleges to have students work in these underserved areas. Please work to incentivize practitioners of vet med to come to Memphis and stay here in exchange for student loan forgiveness. Please do something. Thank you. Sorry for going over my time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all you do. Alexis Agnew. Followed by Glenda Hicks.
Hi, you guys.
Hello.
Hello, hello.
Name and address, please.
Yes. Alexis Agnew, 4321 Elaine Avenue. Dr. Tara is my neighbor. She's being humble. She does every bit of that for free. So all of those figures that she just gave you, she does all of that for free. That's what she's asking for the city, if they're able to allocate a little bit more money, because she ain't made of money. I mean, you know, so. I didn't come here in her support. I came to, again, support the library's decision to form the Union Memphis Public Libraries Workers United. I do support the idea if they want to put a ballot measure on for next year to change their appointment from, sorry, to change their designation from appointed to civil service status. Currently, they are prohibited from collective bargaining, not good, and if we are able to get their status officially changed, it's going to add aid in the transparency in hiring, firing. They get to collectively bargain for fair wages and better working conditions, and these are critical safeguards that kind of, to me, are just kind of the backbone of a democracy. You just have these kinds of protections for your civil workers. We heart our librarians. We heart our library staff. They do more than, more than we ever probably give them credit for, and more than they'll ever tell you, because they're all super humble. So I just wanted to say that, support them. Mada, I missed the committee meeting today, so I apologize. Did we ever find out what happened with the electric buses? I think there were three, and only one is working. So I wanted to ask about that. I'll talk after the end of it. And wanted to brag on Canali. There was a water fountain in Geismann, at the Geismann Community Center that was broken for a month, and the director guy said that he, well, we don't know who's responsible for it. We talked to somebody, talked to somebody, talked to somebody, and I was like, okay. Well, it's spewing out water for 30 days. So I emailed Canali, emailed like just everybody that I could blast if I was able to, and he responded, and they got that done within about six hours. So, you know, when we're up here talking about the things that we wish we could improve, gotta hand it to you. That was pretty impressive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agnew. Glenda Hicks.
Good evening, council members, our electates who sit in the seats to represent our citizens. I just want to say that it seems like there's an air of greater, I'm sorry, Glenda Hicks, 608 Gillies.
Thank you, thank you.
Co-founder of 21st Century Memphis Bus. My apologies. I just want to say that it seems like there's a different air in the council this afternoon, and there, of course, are citizens who were pleased with certain results. However, it is my concern that corporations seem to continue to be put before the best interests of our citizenry. And we know that we're in an age of technological advancements with all that's going on with AI. So I am dearly concerned that our focus is on our citizenry, more so than dollars that might be coming in from these various corporations that are coming in. We've heard about the data centers. We know about XAI. We know that there are concerns that yet are in the minds of multiple areas of the cities that will be impacted by the byproducts of what XAI will bring to communities. So certainly, it is my request as a citizen that you, as the individuals in seats of authority, would certainly be mindful to keep the citizens of Memphis at the forefront of your decisions. And I want to certainly thank Councilwoman Cooper Sutton for all of her efforts, which certainly put the citizens first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Colleagues, that brings us to the end of our public comment. I want to say thank you to each of you, deeply respect and care for each one of you, and thank you for your service. To the staff, I feel the same way about you. To the new members of the staff, welcome. I hope you enjoyed your first city council meeting. And I wish everybody a great rest of your week. I will entertain a motion to